Welcome everyone for today's council meeting for Thursday, March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, six thirty P M. Roll call please.
Mayor Alma Beltran.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Sabrina Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Juanita Molina.
Present.
Councilmember Diego Garza.
Present.
Councilmember Kathy Solario.
Present.
Treasurer Ishmael Spandola.
Present.
Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we can move on to the first item, which will be public comments. Anybody from the public that would like to address the council right now can do so at this time.
Good evening. Um, well, I was here already for your previous meeting, uh, beginning for your animals, the animals at your shelter. Uh, I'm here again today because I wanted to know a little bit more information. It was brought to my attention that the rescue that you currently have in Parlear is being vacated. They were asked to leave Bambi's Rescue and they're no longer going to be working with Parlear. Uh, I'm just a little bit concerned about that because they, as far as I know, or what it seems like, they were the only rescue that you had that was working here. I was also told that Michelle from Bambi's was told I was going to be the replacement, working with Parlear, and that's not true. I want to make sure that everybody is clear on that. Um, I came to advocate for the animals because of the condition that I saw the animals, uh, when I went on January first, as I told you previously. I pulled one of the dogs because he was dying. We went through all of that already. Um, but my last comments in your meeting last time I came, uh, were again questioning what's happening with the shelter. I knew that we got a little bit of, um, updates regarding on what you guys are doing with the new area and the dog's play area. I still haven't seen anything regarding, um, adoptions. I haven't seen anything regarding what animals are available, what's going on with the animals. Everything that I see posted is just animals that are being found and brought into the shelter, but nothing seems to be coming out of the shelter. So that's one of my biggest concerns. I know that I said that I would help, um, market, or, um, I'm sorry. I would help with posting, so with the animals, so that, um, there could be more exposure for the animals. I still have not seen any type of posting, like I said, from the Parlear Animal Control about the animals. It's just concerning again because of the condition that I last saw the shelter. Um, I would like to go and visit again and donate some time to see for myself, right? What the updates are and see what's going on. I'm still willing to, um, forward post and reach out to the people that I know, the rescues that I know. But as you guys know as well, everybody's full, but that, excuse me, that's the best thing for the animals so that, that we just, you know, post and share and do all of that for more, so that they can have more exposure. Um, as of right now, I haven't seen anything at all coming from the shelter, so that's a big concern for me. And then I've also sent, I've had a lot of people reach out to me saying that they want to volunteer. I've also sent those people to Parlear PD because I don't know who to reach out to. I've, um, said Officer, or Chief Serta, to reach out to him. So I wanted to know if you have been able to get a group together of volunteers. Um, I know teachers and parents from the catechism classes here in Parlear have reached out. Um, the coaches that were here the last meeting that I attended, uh, reached out to me and they, we met outside. I gave them my information. They want their girls to volunteer at the shelter. So you have the resources and you have people that are available and ready to do it for what's happening. Who's being contacted or are they reaching out? The posts and things that I've heard or that have come to me is that nobody ever responds. PD doesn't know what's going on with it. They don't know what the condition of the shelter is. They don't know what's going on with the shelter. If somebody wants to reach out to a dog, the dogs are brought to the PD instead of the shelter. Nobody seems to be allowed to go to the shelter, and that's concerning because why? What, what's the reason? What's the condition? So again, I'm sorry, I know that I don't live here, but like I told you before, I work here and I've saved a lot of animals from here. The animals are my biggest concern, so I want to make sure I'm willing to help in, in ways that I'm able to help. But I can't pull dogs from your shelter. I cannot be your rescue. So please, um, update me, let me know. Who do I talk to specifically? I was being here because I want everybody to know, everybody to be on the same page, and hopefully some people will give something about that shelter.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say, um, I wasn't aware until I was notified that, that, um, Bambi's was no longer going to be there. We have not officially brought that to an open meeting for that discussion. It was done. I did see the letter that was sent to Michelle. But, um, those discussions that were discussed in closed session always need to come out in open session. Whatever decision was made, and I'm not aware of anything, um, that was decided on. So it was, it was still a surprise to me to see that, 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 that determination and that final decision was made. I'd, uh, it always has to come before the council in an open meeting. Even if, I know that I missed one meeting that I was in Ensenada, um, that they had a closed session. So I'm not sure if that was when it may, could have been discussed, but it, eventually it still comes back to a meeting and an open session for the public to know. Because technically what goes on, um, in closed session is, is legal matters, personnel, sometimes real estate. But, um, depending on the situation, but it's still, at the end, when a decision is made, has to be reported out. And I have not heard of anything like of that, of that sort that had been decided on. So, um, I don't know if, if that's going to come back in the future. I mean, is that coming to us in a council meeting to, for us to, uh, discuss in an open meeting? Or is it done behind the scenes? I'm asking him a question.
We can bring it back, absolutely.
So.
You know, we, uh, we operate, uh, at the pleasure of the council. So if you want it back, then we'll bring it back.
Yeah, because, because it wasn't, it wasn't, uh, agendized and, um, that did, was brought up to my attention as well. And that's the only reason why I'm actually saying it right now, because I did get that call today, that when was this agendized? Because they, they looked back at every meeting and they did not see anything being reported out. And it was, they looked at all the agenda items and it was not agendized. So if you could bring that back, that would be great. That way we can have a, a discussion instead of just putting it in, uh, public comments because you don't really have time to discuss this matter, and it's important. I, I am one who, um, wants to help our animals. Uh, the solution is not euthan- euthanasia. I know there's people out there that think that we just should just euthanize because there's no room. We have to try all the solutions that we can have to try to save these animals. And then of course, what most have to do is if there isn't any, and you said at the last meeting as well, then you euthanize, but not go to euthanize first and, and then try to find a, a solution. And I know you've been working on it, Chief, with the, the pound. You told me that there's been updates, but I think it's, to be transparent, let's just try to, uh, engage more with the community and let them know that we're willing to share whatever we, information we have with them. We're not hiding anything. So this is the best way to, is to agendize it, have that discussion, and then we can maybe find a solution. So thank you for your time.
I had proposed doing a presentation on it, so, uh, I wanted to bring it back for this council meeting, but, uh, things got delayed. So I'll bring it back for the next present, for the next council meeting. We'll do a presentation on all the upgrades. And yes, the volunteers that we have, we are working with the school. So we've got students who acquire hours for community service. So we're working with the NJ, so, uh, Chief Killian. I spoke with her at length, uh, last week and this week. And we've got several students lined up. We've got other students. So the first phase of that is to have students engage and help out and give back to the community. So there's, but there's liability involved. So there's applications that have to be filled up. There's insurance that has to be filled up. So it's not that simple as just introducing and welcoming people to these facilities where there's potential for, for hazard. So we got to cover our bases or where the city is.
And that's understandable, Chief.
Fiable. So that's where we're at.
Yeah.
But so hopefully by next week, uh, we should have all the applications and, and talking to, uh, Chief Killian. There are, uh, lots of, lots of kids, lots of volunteers from the school that want to do this and are eager to do this.
And that's great.
And we are, we have it structured and we have it in place. So it's, like I said, it's just, there's some red tape. And once we get through with that, hopefully by next week, we'll have the volunteers out there. And then we'll work on the adults. If the adults want to come out, absolutely, we want, we can use all the help we can get. Um, you know, the, the, the resources that we use, we've got about a dozen, uh, shelters and, and outreach that we reach out to, and they're, they're all at capacity. So we do reach out. We do reach out to, uh, our, our nearby, uh, cities to help us out as well. Uh, as far as posting, we'll do a better job at posting, but we are trying to do everything we can before resulting to the last, uh, before we're voting to our, our last result.
I think what they want to discuss is not the pound so much, I think, is what is, um, because of Bambi's being displaced. And, um, I'm, I'm sure she won't be able to go anywhere else here, uh, locally because there is no other location. And being that they only, uh, function by donation, there's no way that they can, um, pay for any of the expenses that I guess you had explained to Michelle, um, the president for Bambi's. So I think there was a bill for fourteen thousand, and when it's, uh, a utility bill, it's fourteen thousand. I just.
Can we not talk about, we're going a little too much?
It's fine. I am. I am just, let me just finish what I need to say, and then we can agendize it and we can move from there. Because, um, I just want to make sure that you have that for the next meeting, because that is what I was told today. That it was a fourteen thousand dollar bill when they, they function only by donation. So if that is.
Actually, it is not on the agenda and the public comment.
So I'm giving him a directive as far as what he needs to bring for the next meeting. Uh, I know you guys don't want me to talk about it because it, you guys don't want me to.
It's not on the agenda and it's a violation of the Brown Act.
Well, it was a violation with the Brown Act with the item that was already made a decision on, uh, Megan, and I was told that you were part of that decision.
And it was never brought to the council. And discuss it with the acting city manager.
Transparent.
When, uh, you can tell him whatever you need. Let's move forward.
I run this meeting, so I thank you for your advice, and I'm just giving him a directive of what he needs to bring for the next meeting. Thank you. So for the next meeting, can you please bring the items of what you were, uh, uh, going to have Michelle pay for the fourteen thousand and the actual contract and the letter you sent her, I guess, was it today?
It's on Facebook.
Yeah, that's why she's saying it.
So if it was given to her, I'm, okay, you guys can go off topic, but it's okay, it's not okay for me.
When you're not here, we have a good meeting.
So, because it's always hatred.
And we're out by eight thirty with you. You talk too much.
Because you guys don't even think about what you're voting on. So.
Can we call a recess on?
Topic. We're off the agenda. We must move forward to the next item.
I gave, I already said what I said to you, Megan, okay? The directive was that I want him to bring that to the next meeting. You're not running my meeting.
She's repeating herself and it's not on the agenda.
Legal advice, and I said that that was fine because I want to make sure that he has the, the proper documentations of what was being said.
You've already provided your direction.
And you need to stop. Please stop.
You've already.
No, you need to stop. Stop.
You need to stop, please.
Okay, Mayor, you are off topic and you've given him direction. Um, uh, David Serta, do you need any more direction?
No, I'm, I'm clear on the direction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I can move on because obviously it's a problem with all you guys. It's, it's, it's okay to make decisions in closed session and not bringing it to the, to the public. So, um, is there any other public comments at this time? No? No, I just wanted a clarity, but it's, it's always a fiasco here, and, and they all gang up on me. That's what they all do. It's not, it's not unusual. So we can move on to the next item with no public, other public comments, and that would be consent, uh, uh, calendar. Is there anybody from the council that would like to pull an item from the consent? Is there any item that we're pulling from the consent calendar? Because I, I don't know what she's talking about, uh, item. So no item to pull? Is there any from the public? Do you have an item that you want to, uh, discuss on the consent calendar? That is what I'm at right now. So you have nothing from the consent calendar? Okay, so if we don't have anything from the consent calendar, do we have a motion to approve all the items on consent calendar? So we have a motion from Diego and a second from.
Kathy.
Kathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Yeah, no, I was just looking at the items. Okay. So five yes. Moving on to the next item, and that's regular business, um, item number four, and that's by Javier. Can you please go over it, Javier?
I would like to make a motion on that one. When you're ready, okay? So we won't forget.
Stop. You don't run the meeting. Do you have to have, I have to open it up. This is why it's necessary for you to attend the actual trainings, because I have to open it up, have the discussion. He presents, I bring it back to council, then I bring it to the public, then I bring it back to council for a vote. It doesn't just, I make a vote. That's why you, that's why you got, oh, uh, uh, through that meeting in thirty minutes, because you don't even discuss anything. You're not transparent. So go ahead, Mr. Andrade.
Um, good evening, Council, Mayor. Um, so tonight's on agenda, I have the, um, the award of the downtown facade project. Um, we went out to bid in two phases with a RFQ and then an RFP. Um, so with, with the RFQ, we received, uh, three bidders. Um, one of them was Coronado Construction, which was disqualified due to not being registered with the DIR. And the other one was V-Mohemo and, um, also, uh, Yanez Construction. Um, of the three, um, uh, one was disqualified, and the other two, uh, were asked to submit a proposal for the downtown facades. And the, um, the bids were opened publicly here at City Hall, and the lowest bidder was, uh, presented here to be awarded, uh, with V-Mohemo Construction Incorporated for the phase three of the downtown facade improvement project.
Javier, can you go over the, um, bidding process? Because I know that there's a, a large, well, not even a large group. It's a small little group that continuously says that you're not providing the, the proper, um, uh, process for the bidding. Can you just go over it? I know that I tried to clarify it, but I think it's important that it's on live stream, that they can listen to how the process works because, um, it's being, um, people are misleading the public that you're not, um, following the process.
Okay, so, um, the public bidding process is, is pretty straightforward. Um, you have to bid it, if you're going to bid out a construction job, uh, the city of Parlear or any, any, in the state of California, you bid it out for a minimum of three weeks. Um, most people do four weeks, uh, just to be certain. Uh, you bid it out in a public place, uh, which includes a newspaper. Um, in our, in our case, we publish it on the Mid Valley Times. And also we post it, um, you have to post it in two places. The second place is the, um, Central California Builders Exchange. Um, that's where the majority of the cities in, in the state put all of their advertising for, for their city projects there. Um, when you, uh, you, you set a timeline for their, for them to submit their cost proposals. Um, and at the date and time that they need to be submitted at City Hall, they have to be submitted before that time. And if they're a minute late, they don't get, um, they don't get read aloud. Um, so the people submit the bids on time, um, get read out in public, um, at the same time. They're at the exact time that you list on, on the bid advertisements. Um, and at that, at that point, we check their entrances, their bid bonds, um, their licenses and, um, any, any, um, references that they may have submitted with the bid. And if all of that's valid, the, uh, lowest bidder gets the, the contract.
Great. I just wanted to make sure that there is community members that understand that that's the process. And most contractors that, um, already know that they go through that, uh, builder's website because that's where most state projects and local projects are at, correct?
Yes, that's correct. It's very common. Most, most of them know.
Yeah, they don't go through the paper most of the time. It's usually the builders, the licensed contractors usually go through that, that process.
Exchange, correct.
Um, as I just wanted to make it clear, because I did see a post like that on social media. Want to make sure that they understand that you are following the law. So is there any, uh, comments from the community? Go ahead.
Good evening, staff and city council members and citizens of Parlear. My name's Fernando Benuellos. I reside in Parlear. And, uh, I'd like to thank you for giving that, uh, clear, uh, message. And yes, there was a lot of questions with that, and thank you very much for answering the questions. I just have one, and again, is to, who has the, the numbers on the project, the cost of the project itself?
Me to answer?
Yeah, go ahead.
So what I explained earlier was that the, um, bidders submit their bids to the city clerk, which they remain in, in a closed envelope that doesn't get opened until the time, um, of the bid opening. At the time of the bid opening, we open it in public. Usually the contractors are there waiting for, for, to see who is the lowest bidder. So they, they get opened only in front of the, uh, public, um, at the time of bid opening.
Okay, now, again, is that the process? Thank you for.
That's the legal process, yes.
But you haven't answered my question. Who has the numbers on, who have them?
Don't they give them to you?
They're brought to me sealed, and then, um, when Javier shows up, I give them to him. There's a certain time cutoff. They have a certain time to process, to bring them in. I turn them over to Javier. He comes into the meeting. Sometimes I will sit with him if he's by himself or if he needs help. I will sit with him. We open up, um, bids in front of the public. It's usually the contractors, and Javier just writes down the list of the numbers.
Again, thank you very much, uh, for that.
That's the legal process.
Are you asking about the quote?
Javier has the numbers. Javier has.
Those are quotes. Those are the quotes that they provide. If that's, or you're talking about what do we, he think? If that's, or you're talking about what do we think it should be, the amount?
The bids that we receive are collected and are kept with Javier.
So, so- Let me simplify it. Let me simplify it.
Well, I just-
This is, this is, let me simplify it. It, 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 the reason why I want to say, I, I understand you're talking to Bertha, but-
Can you put it on the record? She's not letting it-
The simple, let, ma- Yes, let me just simplify it and you can ask Bertha the question that you need to ask. What I'm trying to say, so that maybe you'll understand now and you might not even have a question for her. Those bids, nobody knows the numbers. They come in with a proposal of what they will charge the city to do that job. Nobody has numbers. And they're in an envelope that's blank and it's sealed. You have no information of who the individual is or the company or whatever. So, so when they bring it, it's a, it's an envelope that's blank. So when they open it, they look at all the bids and they go with the lowest bidder. That is how it's legally done.
Okay, I mean, I'm glad that they threw that up.
I, that's why I wanted to simplify it. No. That's not legal.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Is there any, uh, comments from the co-, uh, public? Okay, hearing none. So any questions from the council?
I want to make a motion.
So we have a motion from, uh, Kathy. Do we have a second?
But you know what the motion is?
What is the motion? To deny it? Cause you can't deny the lowest bidder. You want us to, to be liable for a lawsuit?
What, Alma, just relax, okay?
Okay, what is the-
Okay, I want, I'm making a motion to, to rebid on that project, okay?
So you're going to sacrifice our funds, which is two million dollars for our downtown-
I made a motion.
Our downtown rehabilitation project. So you know those are ARPA funds. Right now, our federal government is looking at taking all the money that is not being used. So, public, this way you know that the reason why it's not getting completed, our, our downtown, is we're at the second phase and she is wanting to, uh, rebid it for another, what, thirty month, thirty days? Or whatever it requires and then you come in and, and do the whole process again? We don't have that time.
I made a motion.
It is expires, it expired in December. So right now, with the president being-
A roll call?
With the pre-, I'm gonna finish what I have to say. This is the project that we're talking about. It's on the agenda and it's critical for the city. Two million dollars is in jeopardy right now. So right now, Kathy Solorio, Councilwoman Kathy Solorio wants to rebid it to jeopardize two million dollars for our downtown rehabilitation project that is halfway completed. So we might not even see those funds because the, our president is taking funding away to, uh, reduce his deficit. So if you're willing to sacrifice that because you have a personal issue with the alamans-
Oh my god.
Every single time. I've already heard the complaints. This is why I am bringing it to light. I heard the complaints that you both had and that you di- you didn't like that he was ma- fixing his projects here. I received that phone call today that you didn't like that they were doing these projects.
Made a motion. Can we have a roll call?
And this person that actually submitted a bid has nothing to do with him, has actually worked on projects, on projects.
False accusations.
This is coming from the individuals that they were told this and I am not going to discuss it and-
You need action on it.
I'm not going to discuss it all here. I will discuss it in closed session. I will discuss it in closed session.
And even though Alamaano was involved.
Because, yes, you did. You told Serta.
Wait, I made a motion.
You told Serta. I know that. You told Serta.
Serta, look at Serta shock too.
Okay, um, that's-
Did I talk to you about that, Serta?
Excuse me, council members? That is what-
She's putting false accusations.
No, it's not. Why are you, why are you wanting to rebid it?
Why are you fighting for it?
Uh, he went through-
Just shut up. Please stop.
Why are you wanting to rebid it? Because you don't want him to have the project.
We'll get into discussions. You made a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, so after the second, then you open it up to convers-, uh, a discussion and each of you can have a comment on, on-
Why?
On why or the reasons for that, if you wish.
What's the justification?
And if you want to start, um, council member Solorio, if you have anything further to say or if you don't, that's fine. And then, uh, council member Garza.
Yeah.
Uh, do you have anything you'd like to say on that? I'm just asking because that's part of the-
There was already a motion.
You have to. You just don't want to be transparent. Because you were the two that did not want the project. That is, that, and you're just, you're proving it right now by denying it.
Mayor, it's, it's council member Garza's opportunity to speak. Do you have anything to speak?
Ya bien. Que lo que, lo que-
Any comments?
What they have actually said.
Here, it is council members Garza's opportunity to speak.
I will not comment on anything because of these false accusations.
No, they're not false.
Okay.
And on chief also.
And, and Mayor Beltran, you've already spoken, um-
Too much.
Uh, council member Molina.
I'm still going to elaborate.
Oh, excuse me, Rodriguez.
Um, I don't really, I don't have anything to comment other than Javier, I was looking at, um, business license for the city of Parlear for the, for the company. And, uh, the, the expiration date is the end of this month. So I was just wanting to-
They're quarterly.
Yeah, I think they're quarterly. They can renew the business, the city business.
They're not yearly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, and Mayor Potem Rodriguez, please.
I have no comment.
No comment. Okay, so is, if, is there any other comment to be made?
I have just what I wanted to say because they, because it was brought to my attention that you both had this issue with him, okay? Uh, council-
With the actual applicant that went through the process and this is, this is what, yes, you do.
You, that's, yes, you do. Because it was brought to my attention. This is why I had-
This is why we need to go to recess because she's throwing false accusations.
This is why I had Javier-
Police zoom into the left over here.
Present the process of the bidding process.
So yes, please take a break.
No, I, I'm sorry. You're, wait a minute. Wait a minute.
We need a recess.
I am going to say, you guys are trying to censor me, but they are interrupting me.
She's way out of order.
Not letting me say-
She gave us false accusations. Can you find out what we can do about that? I have ta- not talked to chief. Chief doesn't even know.
Councilmember Solorio, there's a motion and there's a second. So let's finish the comments, please.
And I'm entitled to that.
Is there anything new you would like to say that you haven't already said?
This is what I was trying to say, but nobody wants me to say it.
Please say whatever you wish to say.
With no interruptions, please. The reason why I had Javier do the, what did I just say?
Uh, councilmember Solorio, after-
She will never be quiet.
Mayor, excuse me, after the mayor has her comments, we'll come, finish the vote. So let the mayor speak.
You just don't want me to say the truth?
Councilmember Solorio, please allow the mayor to have her last comments without any comments from anyone else. Please continue.
You're done? I know you're upset. So this is why I had Javier say what the bidding process was. Because these complaints that they were talking about, about this individual or this contractor, it was based on them too.
Okay, thank you.
And so that is why, please- That, that's their accusation. You don't tell me. That is what they brought to my attention. I'm only repeating what was brought to my atten-, my attention.
Councilmember Garza, please let the mayor finish.
He wrong because he's upset that he's caught up in this mess that he created. Because now, not only, not only would it create a liability, a legal liability because we're supposed to give it to the lowest bidder and they went through the legal process, but not only is that, that we're going to be sued, also, also, add another one to your guys' collection, uh, also, the downtown rehabilitation project will not be completed. This is funding that we've been waiting to actually use for downtown over forty years. And we finally had the funding and now you're going to go ahead and make everything stop because you dislike the applicant. That is it. So we can go ahead and, and, and do the roll call and this way the community knows why downtown is at a halt. And that we may, well, not may, we will lose the, the funding from our federal government because he's willing to take whatever is not being used. So, go ahead, roll call.
Are, are you ready to vote then?
Yes, roll call.
Okay, you made a, a motion and you, uh, did a second, so let's do a roll call vote. And, uh, for the record, um, California Code Public Contracts, PCC two oh seven three six does allow that the board or the council in its discretion to re- reject all bid, bids and go back out.
You can.
But, but, but it is-
He can file.
It is at your discretion, so let's move forward with the vote.
And he still can file a legal.
Let's move forward with the vote.
He still can because I checked with another attorney too, Megan, before I made that comment. Because obviously you were always going to still try to say that it's, there's nothing there, but we already have, how many lawsuits?
Oh, they're all yours, Alma.
Oh, they're not. Let's talk about the coercion that you, Diego and, and Janie are, are being accused of. Let's go. That one's in court and it's going next week.
Roll call for item number-
It's going next week and I'll share it on, on Facebook.
For, can you please, can you please, what, what was the motion?
To deny, to reject all bids.
Okay.
Rebid Sabrina.
Okay, well, that's what she knew.
Roll call for motion to re-, to rebid on item number four.
My motion.
Ma- Mayor Alma Beltran. No. Um, Sabrina Rodriguez.
Yes.
Um, Janie Molina.
Yes.
De-, councilmember Diego Garza.
Yes.
And this is why Kathy was so anxious, so anxious.
You're out of line. You're out of line. You're out of line. Please continue, Ms. Martinez.
Okay, did you want to run my meeting?
So what is, what is the vote?
Go ahead, run my meeting, Megan. Run it. Run it because-
Go ahead. So what was the vote, please?
The vote was four yes and one no.
Thank you.
Are you going to run my meeting now?
All right, there is no public comment at this, at this point, sir, no.
She's running the meeting now, so it's, it's Megan, the, the, the chair. Yep, presiding officer, Megan. Are you running it?
You know, I, I think, um, Mr. Serta, we need to take a break. If the, um, if the mayor is going to, uh, show no respect to our-
You obviously don't show any towards me either. The feeling is mutual.
I am giving legal direction as is part of, part of my responsibility and if-
You're interfering with my duties as a presiding officer.
Well, if as a presiding officer, you followed the law, there would be no point in me speaking at all.
You're the one that's taking over the meeting, Megan.
Actually, I'm providing legal direction because the mayor is unable to do so.
No, you just love to walk all over me and it's a power trip and I understand that.
Can we move forward, Mr.?
No, we're not. That, I will- No, you guys can leave if you want, but I am going to move on. You know, because to me, it's, it's about making sure that we don't have all these cases coming, like the three that are, are going to come in next month. So, um, we can move on to the next item. So I just wanted to let you guys know that your, your bid has been rejected. Council voted four to one, so that way you know, okay? Uh, next item is, uh, item five. Javier?
Um, yeah, I'm going to recommend to table this for the next meeting.
In regard to? Why?
Uh, because we don't have confirmation that the school's already reviewed the contract.
I can hear you. Do you have any memory?
Yeah, it's on. We don't have confirmation that the school's reviewed the contract yet.
Um, so you, okay. I'm motion to table the next meeting. And this is for?
The field trips that were required to comply with, with their grant, so the school-
It's for one of the recreation grants.
The school's going to provide, uh, transportation for the students. And so there's a contract that the school has to ratify. And so we just want to confirm that it was ratified and then we'll bring it back.
Is it in the timeline?
Yeah, yeah, we've got time for that.
Cause, um, there's always time constraints when it comes to, um, grants.
Right.
All right, so then it's tabled for the next meeting? Okay.
There was a motion.
There was a motion and a second and it, it needs to be voted upon.
For running that. I was barely going to get to that, Megan. So April the third, thank you. So who motioned? Now that I have the floor again. So Sabrina motion, who's second?
Diego.
Diego, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, it's unanimous. Thank you. And, uh, next item is item number six. Sandra, would you like to present to us?
Good evening, council, mayor. I have item number five, which is the, um, six, I'm sorry. Um, authorization to submit grant application to the Department of Alcoholics Beverage Control for the Alcohol Policy and Partnership Grant Program. Um, this is a grant that is going to be, um, seeks, seeks to enhance its efforts in addressing alcohol-related crimes. And the Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control, it's to, it's providing assistance to law enforcement agencies to implement enforcement efforts to address alcohol-related prob- problems. The grant is up to one hundred thousand. And there is no, um, fiscal impact to the general fund.
I have some things to go over later on about the general fund, so if you're going to stay, that would be, I would wait till then. Okay? Any questions? None? Any from the public? Okay, hearing none. Does, we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. And Diego and Janie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have item number, uh, seven.
Next one, it's authorization to submit grant application to the Board of State and Community Corrections for the Bayrini State Crisis Innovation Program Cohort Two, which is similar to that BSCC grant that we have. Um, this is a grant that it's, uh, from five hundred thousand to up to a million dollars and it's, um, to enhance public safety, cr- crisis intervention, uh, fire, um, reduction, gun violence reduction. And, um, it's, um, providing, um, support to the police department on these items. There is no, um, fiscal impact to the general fund.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none. And any from the public? All right. So we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Diego and second by Kathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, five yes. Okay, uh, next one we have, again with Sandra.
This one, it's an approval of the PLHA Activity Six that it's funding the, and addressing the homeless part of the, um, HCD grant, which is the housing grant. This, um, we're recommending the city council to adopt resolution authorizing nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-six with fifty towards the Parlear Homeless Shelter and Navigation Center. These funds are addressing homelessness and risk of homelessness under the Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, this is a grant that it was already issued to the city of Parlear back in twenty twenty. Um, there are some sections of it that were still pending, uh, at the state level. That's why I'm doing this resolution. It's for four hundred and eight, seven hundred and six thousand dollars. And there is no impact to the general fund.
Can you elaborate more with the, what they are, um, requesting?
This is only to, from the four hundred and eight that we have been given for this grant, we're going to set aside nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-six in case we do a rehab to a house and we need to relocate that family to a shelter temporary, so we can cover those expenses.
So do, what is it, the guidelines that you're working on?
I'm not working on it. The city's working on it, but yeah, it's part of the same grant.
Who's, then who's working on the guidelines?
HCD and first-time home buyer, that's going to be, uh, our-
No, the one she's talking about, for the homeless.
This is the, this is a PLHA grant, the one that they're working on the guidelines. It's part of this grant and it's part of the call home grant.
No, I know about the one for the don-, first-time home buyer assistance, but you're talking about, what are they requiring from you? And that's why I asked you to elaborate.
What are they requiring? They're requiring to set aside this funding. The guidelines that we're doing, it's for the call home grant, which is a different-
So all they're asking you to do is put that money aside?
Yes.
And then you just use the nineteen thousand and the nineteen thousand is going to be used for?
For the homeless, to relocate families.
Homeless is general, so can you elaborate what it's going to cover?
Homeless for families that are going to be under a rehab project that need to move out of their home.
So what rehab project is that?
This is through the same, that grant is same- This is through the same, that grant, this same grant has a rehab program to it. Um, it has home buyer assistance, rehabilitation.
So you're gonna use those funds for temporary, like, shelter for them to be there until they get into their actual home?
Correct.
So that's why I was saying to elaborate, thank you.
You're welcome.
I know, because I, I couldn't get it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, did, go ahead. Go ahead. She has a question.
With due respect, is I have, I've asked the numbers on that for the homeless under twenty thousand. I have never had anything broken down, so I think it's a great program. However, is, uh, we don't have no breakdowns on where the money's gonna go. Now, some of the rehab would be very costly, so I, I just think that why don't we, as a general on the city, we have done it before, is to help out with, uh, you know, with the home, to, to save some money. That way, some of the money goes into the families or the homeless. So I'm willing to help out to rebuild whatever it is, gonna be painted a house, so I'm, I'm willing right now to help out.
I, I think you, what you would need to do is, is find out, um, through the person that actually handles the grant, and, and find out what, what qualifies, yeah.
Yeah, because I did.
That's why I wanted her to elaborate what it was about, because homelessness is a lot in general.
Yeah.
Yeah, it can cover a lot of different things, that's why I wanted her to elaborate that, so that there's a clear understanding of what it covers. So, um, being that we don't know all the details of what you need to have, how it works, um, the best place is, it would be with just going with staff that handle that grant.
Okay, because I did it president one time, I did have two homes for the homeless. I owned them and I provided that for about, uh, you know, ten people at one time. It worked out really good, you don't have to pay a manager. The manager gets, uh, free room and board, though you don't pay them anything, and they'll, they'll take care of that. Uh, the government, they can get social security, so they make about seven hundred dollars a month, and that pays for the food and everything, so it, it's a really good program if we can, I'm so, I'm willing to sit down with anybody, I, I had about seven.
I think it would be them, because like I said, I, we don't have the details. We just know it's, it's, uh, for the homeless, and like she said, it was just to, so when someone gets displaced, they have a temporary shelter for them to get, to stay until they get into their home.
Okay, well, thank you.
Is this for someone that's getting their house remodeled, Sandra?
This is for somebody who's getting their house remodeled.
Yeah. So then that, that's, that's where it's confusing, because if you're saying homelessness, then technically, that person is not homeless.
It's how the state name the activity, but it's not necessarily somebody that is homeless.
They're displaced.
Very healthy.
That's why, when you say homeless, you deceive the people by saying homeless, then it should be worded differently, and, and be brought, and it, it should be worded when it's being presented differently. Because this way, there's clear understanding, right?
Yeah, that was my question, just to clarify. So the people who are approved for the rehab, home rehabilitation, they need somewhere to go, and that's what these funds are being set aside for, to place them there temporarily while their homes are being rehabilitated, because they did qualify for that assistance, correct?
Correct, and if, if you're okay, I can bring back the grant and explain how this grant is gonna work.
Work.
This is just a section for that grant.
Okay, and, and like, you, like Mayor says, the word homeless is so broad, and, and it can mean a lot of different things, but, I mean, if that's the way it came to you.
Well, I think it's how you present it too, because you can say it's under the homeless program, but this is what it's for.
Yeah.
It covers this specifically, because when you say homeless, people think the homeless people that we have in the, in the community, and, and you can get them temporary housing and all of that, and it doesn't really qualify.
Yeah, because I read it like that, like, and I'm like, okay, well, wait a minute, so yes, thank you for clar.
And that is true, because at the beginning, I thought the same thing, but it's not, it's only for the people who are gonna be displaced during the rehab process.
Their rehabilitation.
Sandra, is that, is that, is that including the ADU homes too?
Correct.
So, okay, very well, and when do you have to have your application, do you know, or what's going on there?
Yes, we're submitting the application, this one is gonna be due, um, I believe this one is, it, it, this was already submitted. This is for compliance, at this moment, on this one, we're just waiting for the guidelines.
Oh, okay, but nothing's set in stone right now, right?
What do you mean?
For, like, for the ADU, can they apply now?
No, not yet, this is just for compliance with the state now.
Thank you.
Yeah, you, we need to have the guidelines before they can actually, and that's another question that I had too, because, um, it's been since last year that we've been working on these guidelines, and they keep getting sent back and returned, and with other clarifications, or I'm not quite understanding why it's taken this long just to get guidelines, uh, approved by the state? Because you, you're gonna, now, I believe you received them back, right? The guidelines that were rejected by the state, and now they're working on.
She actually doesn't take care of that part, so.
So you don't, you don't know what's going on in the department that you handle?
No, 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 I'll, I'll share with you that we have been working on the guidelines, and they have been submitted.
Because I was told that you were in that meeting with the builder as well, as the other.
She wasn't put in charge of handling the guidelines, so, that's what I'm saying.
Then you should have had, okay, well, who handles it then?
So I'm, right now, I'm having our, uh, planning and, and building, uh, department handle that. So there's a, two, a couple of staff members that are involved in that, and we've resubmitted those guidelines, so we should be getting them back soon.
So where to be Jeff? Jeff, are you handling that, that as well?
There were additional checklists that were required as part of the guidelines that, for whatever reason, staff was not aware of at the time, so we have now fixed that, we have updated them to be consistent with what other cities have had adopted by HCD, and all that we have left to do is go through a series of five checklists, where we identify the pages within the guidelines that certain criteria appear, and then it will, uh, get resubmitted.
Yeah, because that's what I had heard, that, um, there was that meeting, and, and I was told that you were in that meeting as well, that's why, and the other employee. So I was told that it was rejected from the state, but now that you're handling it, we're adding more things to you, right?
Yeah, it's already been, it's already been taken care of.
Okay, so, all right, then that's good, so then when will we be able to submit those, that way it can get approved? And then, uh, because it's gonna come back to council, and then it has to go back to the state?
And the intention is to bring it back to the council at its next meeting.
Okay, all right, because I've been asked a lot about that. Okay, uh, is there any?
Yeah, you can't, you can't apply for it twice, can you?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So is there any other questions? Is there questions? Oh, I thought you were gonna ask a question. Any from the public? Hearing none, so do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Diego and second by Janie, all those in favor? Motion carries, five yes. Okay. I guess you're gonna just stay up there the whole time.
I have one more, okay, this is the last one for today, I promise. Um, this is a resolution authorizing the submission of the grant application to the Sierra Kings Healthcare District for the general grant program. This is for the, strictly for the senior center. It's, um, it provides funding opportunities for projects that, um, focus on obesity, diabetes, and behavioral health. It's up to twenty-five thousand dollars, and there's no impact to the general fund.
So how are we doing with the, uh, because I know that there was issues with this grant, and this is why the other organization took over. So have you been able to talk to Shinira, and making sure that we're in compliance this time around? Or who is the one, let me ask that question again, who is the one that's handling it?
You might wanna ask that to city manager, to acting city manager, and then he can address that.
So have you talked to Shinira and, and making sure that we're in compliance, or that we will be in compliance this time? Because this, this actually was taken from us, because we were not providing the services that we were supposed to according to the grant.
No, I have not had that conversation, and if.
I think it's important.
If I need to have that conversation with her after we submit the application, or before.
I think you need to.
I can have that, uh, that conversation with her, and assure her that we will follow through and comply with the grant. And hopefully, they'll give us another chance, and that's what we're looking forward to.
I think it's important, because the, the board.
And show that we can handle the grant, so that's.
The board was the one that actually rejected it, it also, I, I think I shared it with you, where it came out on the Mid Valley Times, um, where they rejected our, um, our, our grant, because we were now in compliance. So it is probably better that you start the conversations before we submit, versus submitting and then starting the conversation, that's kind of backwards. So you wanna, you wanna make sure that, you know, we have the staff that, uh, understand it better now, and that are capable of doing it, versus, because when I kept, I, I know you wanna say something, I, I, let me finish. Um, so I talked to her, the, when, um, the last city manager was here, she kept contacting me, and she kept contacting the city manager, and not getting anywhere. So I'd rather have you start it, with it in the right way, versus she's gonna think like, am I gonna deal with the same situation? Because her board is the one that decides, but we can submit it, but her board is the one that decides. But if you talk to her, she might be able to, um, convince them that it's a different situation now.
Okay, I'll take that initiative.
I think it's best one.
I did reach out to them, I know they're, I'm fully aware of it, of the other one, they're fully aware of the other one. Submitting the application doesn't mean that we're gonna get it, but we did discuss what happened on the other one. Um, we're gonna have a meeting on April eighth, that they're gonna have questions for us to see if we're a good candidate for this grant in this, during this round. But applying doesn't mean that we're gonna get it, we're just letting them know that we're interested again in this funding.
But I think what I'm trying to say, I understand that you, it's an application, but if they already had a bad situation, they're not gonna consider us. So if you start the dialogue and talking to them, and, and letting them know that the situation is different now, then you might get a different response, uh, by, okay, well, they're willing to change what they did, where the mistakes that were made before, they've changed those mistakes, uh, and now they understand better what's going on, they might consider us. But it, but if we don't even do that and submit it, I would be the way, that same way, I would be like, uh, no. Because, because it puts them in a liability with the funding, because if we're not using it correctly the way we're supposed to, I always say that, that we have to pay it back, same thing with them. If we're not using it according to the grant, they have to pay it back.
Correct, I totally agree with that, I did have that conversation with them.
Well, that's good to hear, I'm glad you did, because that way, it gives us a better chance. Okay, is there any question?
Uh, yeah, I had a comment. Um, I did talk to them, Sandra, the representative from Kings, yes, I was at an event at Reedley, for the seniors, uh, before we did the event here, and I also brought them to our event here for the seniors. I did speak to them, she spoke very highly of you, I wanna thank you, I wanna say, great job. Um, she had nothing but good things to say, how good you've been communicating with them. She did mention to me about how the, our last grant, how it went, and it did not go good. Had a lot of trouble trying to communicate with the person that was, um, that was taking, that was controlling, that was in charge of that grant. Um, she did mention that, she said, I could say it loud and clear, I mean, you guys, City of Parlier is very lucky to have Sandra doing the job she's doing for your city. And she did mention that the grants were gonna come out, they were gonna send them to you guys, so you guys could apply for the grant again, and I did thank her, and part of our city, and, and, and as the council, because, um, when we did get that grant, me and Councilmember Solorio were there when they gave it to us. This agency gives so many grants to so many communities, not just Parlier, to the schools, and they help so many. Um, when they came to our event, they, I, we let them talk about their agency, and all the people that were there, with all these agencies that were there, they explained how they're there to help all of their agencies. So, um, really, really, thank you so much for all your hard work.
We're getting off topic a little bit, but, uh, I, again, um, again, it's only when it's me, but, um, I understand that you're working on it now, you were working on it before too, and.
I wasn't working on it before.
It was, who was it then? No, it was.
No, I wasn't working on it before.
I'm not gonna debate this, I'm just, I'm just repeating what was said to me, okay? And, 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 and this is why I'm just trying to say that we're, we need to learn from the mistakes that were made. Because nobody comes in knowing what they need to do. Sometimes mistakes are made, that doesn't mean that you're gonna get, you know, a, a huge trouble because you made a mistake. It's when we recognize that we made a mistake, and accept it, and move from it, and do better. When we keep deflecting, uh, to other people, that's when we don't learn, okay? Because that happens a lot, a lot. And, and I'm not saying that you're to blame, I'm not pointing it at you, I just know what was said to me, and I just wanna make sure that those mistakes are not gonna be made again. Because it's easy to point the finger, it's, it takes courage to actually accept that you made a mistake and move from there. Okay?
Well, thank you for bringing this up, because it wasn't me, I just wanna make.
No, no, I'm not pointing the finger at.
It wasn't me.
I'm saying what was, whoever was in charge, I, the, the, the problem is, is that we don't have a city manager that's, that was here that can actually defend herself too, because she's the city manager. She doesn't do the, everything that the staff do. That's why we have staff that does that job. So we can't put all the blame on one, it's many people that are involved, whether it was because they didn't understand it, and that's okay. Is when you learn from it, that it's, makes it better for the city, because we learn, we learn by our mistakes. You know, there's nothing wrong with that, as long as we learn, but when we don't learn, that's the problem. That's all I'm trying to say, I'm not saying, oh, it was all you, Sandra, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that we need to learn from our mistakes, whoever it was, what, whatever you may feel that you did, or somebody else did, that needs to change, and that's how we're gonna move the city forward, is when we learn to accept that, and just accept that the mistake was made, and we can move on from that, okay? So I'm not blaming you.
Nobody's perfect, everybody does, can make a mistake, and we know you weren't part of that mistake, so no worries.
Here we go with the broken record again, I'm just saying it in general, is what I'm saying. Okay, so, did you wanna make a motion then?
I'd like to motion to approve.
Second.
And, uh, Diego, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, five yes. Um, another question too, as, um, when will you bring it back for us to know on the update on the status on that, um, do you know?
For the ones that we're applying?
Yes.
Yeah, once we get awarded, I'll bring it back for approval that it's been awarded, and then we can follow up on, on whatever the requirements are.
Okay.
But yeah, I'll bring it back.
Okay, thank you. All right, next is a, um, item number ten, and that is from, I guess, a purchase for a computer?
Yes, so, uh, Mayor Council Residence of Parlier before you, is a report requesting to purchase a computer server. We are, Unity, our, our tech service company notified us that we are, our city server, which contains all our data, city data, highly confidential information, important information that we cannot afford to jeopardize, is at ninety-five percent capacity, and we run the risk of losing a lot of data, as well as not, as well as any future data, so we, uh, we acquired a quote, and below our, the fiscal impact for that quote, it is something that is, I would consider urgent, um, because of the, the potential for jeopardizing data that is in, at City Hall. So the quote is attached, and there is a fiscal impact of eleven thousand thirteen dollars eighty-one cents.
Who, who, did you go out to bid?
This is, this is Unity.
Unity?
Yeah, because it was, it was urgent, I did it, because this is the tech company that we use, and because it's at ninety-five.
You don't wanna just get comparables just before you.
I'm just, I'm just afraid that we're gonna, I don't wanna, if that server goes down and crashes, all her data's gone, and then we will be.
Well, you can probably do it with them, but I, I would have preferred, because I'm gonna say something, um, I think we've had some issues with Unity already, I don't know if you guys have them at the school, do you guys have them? Uh, I, I, I think I mentioned it to you before, as far as this, uh, company. I just wanna make sure that we get the right one, because if we spend the money and it still doesn't protect us, then you just spent all that money and, and it still crashed.
Right. I, I hope the contract will have a, it, it should, we'll make sure that the terms and conditions, there's a warranty in there, and.
But, but like you said right now, is that you're worried that it, our information.
The server.
How old was the last server?
I'm not sure, but it's at ninety-five percent capacity, and it's probably, it's, it's ready. With all the data that goes into that server on a daily basis, I'm, I'm just like, holy smokes, I don't wanna jeopardize losing all that data. We would be in, in chaos, it, it would just be a mess. Our, our financial aspect, uh, building and planning, all of that stuff is just, it would be gone. So I, I, that's why, it was an urgent matter, that's why, when I got this, uh, notice, I, you know, jumped to put it on the agenda.
No, I, I get the urgency, but I just would have, probably, hopefully, that you would have.
If it wasn't, it wasn't at ninety-five percent capacity, maybe eighty-five, I think we had some more time, but at ninety-five, it's just.
So they waited till this time to, to notify you about this? So they waited till this time to notify you about this? See, that's, that's, that's the thing that I'm, that I'm saying is that, i- if they would have been more, if they would have communicated with you a lot sooner and told you, hey, you know, this is, you're getting to this and we wanna make sure you avoid getting to ninety-five percent. And now they put you against the wall like, okay, now you gotta do this. That's what I'm talking about. You know, because you wanna make sure you have a, a company that's gonna actually, um, work with you and, and advise you in advance versus waiting till the last hour and say, oh, well, by the way, you gotta do this right, like yesterday. You know, it's like, I, I don't, I don't think that that's good business.
I'll have to look into their, uh, their policies regarding and practices and the contract that, that, uh, that exists. And look at what stipulations are in there and how they-
I don't think there's stipulations about when they need to notify you. I think that's just business. And I think that would be in good faith that they would notify you, uh, in advance versus waiting till the last hour and saying, you know what? This is all, this is the only alternative and you can't do anything else and you're forced to pay for what we're gonna pay.
Okay.
Chief, you make that call. Cause you know how urgent it is and all that. And if you feel it's, you're safe, it's comfortable and saves us, do what you gotta do, chief.
Yeah, um, because, um, uh, but anyways, um, I just wanna make sure that you're getting into a contract that's, you know, cause I, I had actually talked about it before where we should have looked for another, um, company. Cause I, I, I know that there was issues with the, um, equipment sometimes. Well, we still have it with some of these equipments here.
Okay.
So, but it, I guess we're just forced now.
I'm just erring on the side of caution. I just really-
Caution, that's too-
We're taking the risk.
I get that. I understand that, chief. I, I know you have to do it. I'm not complaining about you having to do it. What I'm saying is that they're not being considerate to us to notify us in advance.
I, I'm, I'm thinking, maybe they did let us know, um, before. Yeah, because-
But they waited ninety-five, but this is right now.
Normally, it does, I mean, build up pretty quick, but I know, I know we do get expenses that, this is urgent.
So you've been acting for a year now, right? So you mean more than a year?
Yeah. If they would've told you ahead of, if they, they would've, could've told you a couple of years ago and said, hey, just let me know, you know, prepare for this, prepare for this expense.
And then stay with-
And nobody's here at, who was here at that time.
I, I don't want to keep blaming the last person that was there because that's what we're tending to do a lot. I, I, I know that this-
Well, within the last five years, yeah.
Okay, we keep doing that and the last four years, you know, we deal with the same thing here and this, this. But the thing is, is that you've been there a year and they still should have said that. And you still should have that communication with them and talk to them, why didn't they notify you? That now they know that you've been here for a year and maybe have thought like, hey, it's a new manager, maybe I need to let this manager know. If they notified the person two years ago. I'm just saying.
I can-
That, that way you can communicate with them and let them know that it's not acceptable for them to wait till the last hour and the next time.
Conversation with them and get those-
Chief, that's all I'm saying.
Chief, maybe you can, you can communicate with them and ask them if they had given you prior le- letters to clarify that. How's that?
If they have given you that, because if that, if they've given you that, that would show that they communicated with you and you ignored it. So I don't think I wanna say that. I would just rather say that, you know, to let you, okay?
To me, it might've been somebody else, but it wasn't me. But when I heard that and I saw that, I said, okay.
That's what she's saying, that if they communicated with you. I think that-
What did I say?
Somewhere down the road, the ball was dropped. That's all I'm saying. That it was dropped.
And missing it, when was the first time?
The city that's gonna get sacrificed for that now. But, um, with that, is it, go ahead.
You know, the, the whole issue here is the bickering and, uh, the devastation that's gonna happen with the city is immense. And I think this having the, the computer, as the chief was saying, should be supported because by losing so much information of the computer to be, um, crashed, you're gonna be paying a lot more trying to get the information, a lot more than a thou- eleven thousand dollars. So can you imagine some of the information going out to the public? I don't know how that works. But for some people to get this information and to use it against other people in the public, can you imagine the lawsuits that this, uh, city will incur? So I'm just saying, it's like, you know, I understand what you're saying. Someone should have told him ahead of time. Yes.
I, I don't think he's saying, Fernando, I was gonna call you Humberto, sorry. Um, I don't think he's saying that, um, it's gonna get leaked out. It's gonna crash. The, our, our, our information will be gone. It, it's not that it's gonna get leaked out and information will go out there for, for like, you know, like the, the security part. It's just that we will lose the current information that we have in our files here. And it's stored in our memory in the, in the computers. It's, it won't get leaked out to somewhere else. It's just we'll lose that information, which is, it is critical. But what I'm upset about is that they waited till the last hour. I'm not saying that I'm not supportive. I'm just letting him know that he needs to let them know the next time, he needs to be informed ahead of time and not wait till the last hour. Because that's their job. That's what an IT person or, or company does.
Yeah.
Keep you, keep you, uh, 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 informed of what's going on with your system.
Yeah, I mean, you, I mean, you're right. They should have let him know.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that I'm not, I'm not approving or not, and not in favor of it. Is that I want him to let them know that it's not right for them to wait at the last hour.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was, uh, their mistake, but I think, uh-
It's not his mistake.
No, 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 but I'm just saying their mistake, but I'm saying the chief is, I think, left in a situation of very hard predicament. He has gotta make that decision right away because just putting a little bit more information on, on the hard drive, it might cause, I'm just saying, I don't know that much-
They'll understand that, yes.
Okay, I do, I do understand that you, everybody understands that. However, I don't. I'm trying to make that clear. Okay? So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
All right.
So that's why I'm just saying that I think it's very critical. Thank you.
No, and nobody's against that. It's just making, making sure that you hold them accountable for not, for not communicating with you sooner. Huh? So who's getting the email?
No, don't say it, say it, yeah.
But recently? That was a year ago. So that was the last one? See, that's unacceptable still. Because that was back in twenty-three. Twenty-four went by. Here we are in twenty-five. So that's why I'm saying, chief, I'm not saying that it's, that it's not, uh, a good idea to, to get it done. It's that hold them accountable for letting you wait this long at the last hour. Twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five? Come on. That's all I'm saying. Okay? Thank you. Um, um, so do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Diego.
Second.
Second by Kathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Five yes. Okay. You can start with your comments.
Uh, yes, once again, I wanna thank, uh, staff and, uh, you know, everybody, all the departments out there for doing a great job. I know everybody's working hard and they're trying their best, so I certainly appreciate that. Um, I do want to, uh, and it was under consent calendar, so our big Easter festival is coming up. That's April twelfth on Saturday. We are inviting the community to come out. It's a free event. We've got Easter baskets. We have Easter egg hunts. Uh, we've got, uh, music. We're gonna raffle off bikes, lots of prizes, free food, music. And it's at Earl Ruth Park at noon on Saturday, April twelfth. Please come out and hang out, uh, with, uh, the police department and our, our staff. And we're gonna have a really good, uh, community event, so thank you.
I also just wanna thank the staff for their hard work, everybody that has something to do with our city, our residents. Keep asking questions. Uh, please come to the council meetings. Keep yourself informed of what's going on. If you have questions, please come into City Hall, ask for anything you need. Humberto's really good about, uh, requests, anything that, um, residents are asking. Um, wanna give a big shout out to the, uh, Parley Unified School District for their event yesterday. It was so many people. It was really fun to see all the community come together, the families, the kids performing. Very honored to be able to be part of their introduction when they did have the introductions. Um, other than that, thank you so much, everybody. Have a good evening.
Um, just to piggyback off of, um, Janie, the showcase yesterday, um, um, again, congratulations to Parley Unified. They, it was a well-attended event. I didn't get to get recognized. I was working and Diego was working. Yes, they did. I did get a shout out later. Um, but it was nice to see all the community out there. Um, the city had a booth out there and, um, the police department. Um, it was nice to just to see everybody out there, um, enjoying the night and all the things that we have going on in the, our district. A concern that was brought up to me, um, last night, um, regarding the Parler Academy, the two-year-old program that was advert, that was brought to us. And they were advertising for those children to be enrolled. Uh, applications were put out. Um, I had a parent make a comment that they were still waiting on word back from the academy regarding that. And it's been months. Um, I'm, I, I want an update on why it didn't move forward faster. Um, because even I was giving that information of, in my line of work, um, sending people over there to, um, register their children. Um, I'm a little disappointed, but I would just like an update at the next meeting, chief, if we could get that clarified and what's going on, um, with that. Because, um, again, you advertised for that. People were getting the applications completed, taking time off to go take their kids to the doctor to get everything that was necessary to complete the application to be considered. And that was back in September and we're already March of twenty-twenty-five. I was upset hearing that from our parents in the community. And again, those are our parents. Those are our community members. And they're just looking for childcare in our city. And this is, you know, they got deterred to go somewhere else. But if I could get an update, please, on that. Um, another concern of mine is the property on the northeast corner of Newmark and Tullary. I brought it up before. Um, it's a eyesore. It's right across catty corner from the Catholic church. Um, I've had people call me, text me that it, it's like, it's a dump site. It's a dump site. There's, um, dumpsters out there. Um, yes, I know it's things from around the city, but I would recommend, or if we can clear out what the enclosed city property that is already, um, chain-linked with the privacy slates. If we could clean that out, um, I don't know, do a auction on some of that stuff, clear that out, move that stuff in there, the dumpsters. Um, it's just, it's, uh, it's ugly. It's an ugly sight to see that, you know, going to church, going down to town, going to events. It's, it's a dump site. And it gets worse because people just think, well, I'm just gonna dump it right here. At first, it was, you know, a nice empty lot. Um, they had the sand there for sandbags. Um, then it just kinda got to the dump site. I've had multiple complaints and I've brought it up multiple times. So if we can get something going on with that, clean it up a little bit more and remove those dumpsters from there. I, I think there's, see what we can do with that. And like I said, that what's in that gated city property across from Public Works, there's a lot of stuff just sitting there. So I don't know, is, can we do a, an auction?
We would have to surplus that and bring it back and get your approval and then we could look at doing an auction. Yeah.
Yeah.
The ones on a grant.
So what do you do with that? Well, that's just, what do you do with that?
According to the grant, you can't transfer it, you can't sell it, you can't, you-
So do you like send it, I, I, I'm just saying because, you know, I mean, you're storing stuff that we can't use. Is there any way to fix it? I mean, that's my, do we put money into it to fix things or?
If there's funding available, we can look into that, but if there's no funding-
Yeah, no, I agree. If there's funding, if and when, if and when that ever happens, I, I, yeah, let's try and do that or, you know, maybe the kids at the school can kinda refurbish that stuff that-
It's the battery though.
Yeah. And, and again, maybe something we can, I, I, it's just sitting there and it's, it's again, an eyesore. And it's just accumulating, taking up property space. Yeah, but it's just taking up property space. So I'm, that's what I'm saying. I know. Well, let's see what we can kinda do with it. Um, and then, okay, let's see, uh, okay, and the comment I wanted to make, um, we as a council have the opportunity to go out to rebid, rebid on, on bids. I would like to, I would have liked to seen more bids put in so as to have a bigger pool opportunity to get other, um, companies to bid. Um, gives us a more, a variety in what things do cost. Possibly a lower bid is what maybe an outcome can come with tonight's. But again, a lower bid. Um, I think, uh, please let me finish. My decision has nothing, my decision has nothing to do with certain individuals, like that was mentioned earlier. Again, my decision has nothing to do with certain individuals. I don't know any of these people, but thank you for what you do. Thank you for what you do. Um, again, I wanna thank staff. The grant thing, Sandra, that, that's a, a whole other, you know, subject to go into and, and it is a lot. But thank you for what you do with the staff, you know, our city staff. Um, it, it's just a lot of work that everybody has to do and it's a team thing. It's not an individual thing. It's a team thing. And yes, we need to find an administrator, a city manager, which we're doing to oversee our, our city, run, to run our city, to make sure it's run efficiently. Um, again, like I said, we are in the process of finding a city manager. And again, please be patient with us. And again, I just wanna make sure our staff knows that you are very much appreciated. From, you know, um, Public Works to the Parler PD, um, you guys are very much appreciated. And again, thank you and I can't wait to see you at our next city event. Thank you.
Um, I just wanna say thank you to all staff. Um, I'll keep it short and sweet. I think we've been here long enough, so. Thank you to everyone. I appreciate you guys.
I also wanna say I attended yesterday's, uh,
It was very nice. We enjoyed it. It was good. We got to talk to the staff over there. They were very polite, very polite. They asked for Janie and I could go to give her a speech. We gave a good one with a nice big nod of applause. It was great. It was good. And we were not, but I didn't like being accused right now, so I, I, I'll go and ask Megan to look into that. What, what grounds can we do? Because we're falsely being accused here in front of the public, which we had no knowledge of. And I never talked to the chief, so anyway. Thank you. She's saying it again. So anyway, can you look into that for us? Cause we got false accusations all the way across the board here.
If you-
Okay, that's, that's all I'm asking. And everybody have a great evening. Javier, Jeff, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah. Uh, again, the bidding process, uh, I know you talked about it, Sabrina. I get that you wanted more bidders, but this is the reality of it and this is where it's, again, not being understood correctly. You get the bidders that bid. You don't go look, oh, okay, hey, can you bid? Can you bid? Can you bid? Can you bid? You put it out there like an applicant for them to apply. So if you don't get a good selection of people to apply, that doesn't mean that because you're, you're making it go a second round that you're gonna get a different outcome. Because we, we had it there. For how many months has that been out there already? Javier?
Uh, total was about, uh, almost two months, month and a half.
Okay, so a month and a half. And that's usually what it goes for. Usually I've seen them for thirty days. Um, so we even extended it for a month and a half, almost a month, two months. People will bid for what they want to bid for. This is the same problem you had with the first bid. You didn't get many applicants or maybe, uh, not many, uh, not applicants, but many bidders because you only got what, two? And only one qualified?
Yeah, yeah.
So now you go with the second bid and you got how many bidders?
Three.
Three. And only one qualified?
Two, two qualified.
Two qualified? Okay. So just because you reopen it for a third bid, doesn't necessarily mean that it's gonna change anything. All you're doing is prolonging the outcome of that project, which I said already that that project is through the- That that project is through the ARPA funds that our president is looking at. Taking money away from the places that are not using it, these are federal funds. Federal, Kathy, you you can say that he's my president, whatever, I'm speaking facts, you're speaking your opinions. And the fact of the matter is, even if it wasn't him and it was a different president. If that president is taking the monies, just like our governor, uh Newsom is taking monies that are not being used too. He's taking them back, so if we're not using them and they see that they've been sitting there for two years now. You think that they're gonna say, oh, it's Parlier, let's just hold off, Parlier needs that for their downtown, no. They're gonna say, well, they obviously don't need it, bring it back, we need it to fix our deficit, that's all they care about. Whether it's the president, whether it's a governor, whoever it is, that's what they're looking at. So that doesn't mean because we open it up for bid again, that you're gonna get more bidders, cause they're all willing to come to Parlier. The only reason why we've been having this problem with with downtown and I had this conversation with Javier, the first bid. Not many bidders want to build downtown because you have a old building that's been there for forty years. No contractor out there is willing to do it. Because it's gonna, they they're not gonna do it for the amount that we're like putting it for, what is it? One point? I'm sorry?
We it's remainder about a little less than five hundred thousand for the uh.
So you think that you're gonna have all kinds of people wanting to work on the second phase with five hundred thousand, cause we already spent the other part, but. Um for five hundred thousand, no. So all that it's gonna do is that you're just gonna have a downtown halfly done, that's all it's gonna create. Because just because you were reopening it, just like we had the problem with. With the position of our finance director and thank you for being here, finally we have one, thank you Myra, I appreciate you applied. Because how many, how many years did we go through trying to find a place for your replacement, not your replacement, but for the replacement of the previous one? We went through several years, go ahead, if you wanted to say something. Okay, um so i- it's not an easy, it's not an easy fix, it's not an easy. Do you have the floor, um Kathy? So well, like I was saying, um the thing, what contract are you talking about? What contract? You're you're you didn't even understand her question because nobody does, but at the end of the day, like I said. Just because you open it up for a bid and the third time, doesn't mean you're gonna get more. You're just prolonging your situation and that's what happens with the lack of understanding how things work. But that's what I just wanted to explain, um Sabrina, cause I think you thought, oh, well, more people will apply.
I don't have a bidding process work, I do, um I did it at the school, I collected them.
Yeah, but do you, do you?
But again, I don't have to explain myself anymore.
I'm not, I'm not having you explain, but do you thi- do you really think that you're just because you're reopening it, you're gonna get more people? I don't think so, the reality and the logic of that is not, because why? Cause there's not that many um contractors that are gonna go for a five hundred thousand dollar project. And and knowing that the the it's a complicated one, not an easy one, a complicated one. So even though you don't wanna elaborate and you don't have to explain, I'm not asking you to explain, I'm explaining it to you. But again, so um chief and Megan, um I do have a resolution. That I would like to uh present to you in regards to a um. It's for safety, um we have a um. A resolution that is for um pedestrians and motorists that are out there, especially during. The time that we have, the the students that are released. We um I did speak to um Dr. Inigaz in regards to um having a resolution to enforce. The rules of the law that are in place, I don't know if there is any citing on jaywalking anymore, if that's been. Overturned or it's still the same, so but we need to do and I talked to um Dr. Inigaz is to have. Um the the crossguards in the um. In the um areas where the kids are all is very congested. Because that is the problem, a lot of people think that um it's the drivers only, but it's also the kids. The kids are very daring, um they always have that mentality, well, I'm gonna cross, they have to wait. And sometimes that is the law, but not everybody is noticing that person that's in front of them and. Or by the time they notice them. Exactly, so Megan, I I will forward you an a resolution that um. Actually Esmeralda Hurtado and I were working on, Sanger's doing the same thing and it's about um. The um crossguards that need to be in place, your law enforcement needs to be out there. And by having a resolution that enforces that, they must be out there during those hours, because I know that I brought that to your attention. And I know you tell them, but with that resolution kinda holds them a little bit more accountable. So that there is rules that they can follow for safety concerns, we had two casualties in Parlier. Yeah, Aunt Madison and then uh Sanger had two casualties as well. So that's why we were both working on something and I'm I'm thankful that I have Esmeralda as a colleague that I can work with and. She's a very smart woman and um uh so it's it's basically just investing in uh lighting. Um signage, speed bumps, especially on the areas where the schools are at. I know behind the high school, that's a a big concern there, I'm not sure if you uh heard about. A lot of kids speeding through there or doing the donuts and you see the signs of them doing it. So speed bumps, um the crossguards, the lighting, the signage, the officer presence. Um so I will forward that to you, I have it, Megan, so you can just adjust it to where what you think that might be. Needs to change depending on the law.
Great, if you forward it to um your city manager also and we'll we'll work together.
I'll put it together with both of you, yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, cause um I think that um having the conversations with the students, that's another thing that we can do, but. Having a resolution that also kinda pushes the officers to be out there and more vigilant, because one of the complaints that I always get. Is that they're not present when they're being released. And Sanger, you do see them out there a lot more than you do um in 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 Parlier and um. I'm not saying that they're not busy, I'm just saying that there's priorities and we don't wanna wait till another casualty or something happens. For them to be out there, so let's be proactive instead of reactive and 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 um have them be out there at least during those. The times of the early mornings and um in the evenings when they are the afternoons. Um and uh collaborating with the superintendent to making sure that their crossguards are out there too, because um that's important. That way, that's where they can prevent those accidents, cause when they're out there, they stop the kids and when there's nobody there, I've seen it. They just keep going all over and you're like dodging kids, dodging cars and it's like, that's very, very um hectic and I don't always have to. I don't have to drop off kids anymore, but what every now and then I have to drop off my granddaughter and I'm like, oh my god, you know, it's really crazy. And I don't want that to be something that we have to work on after something happened, especially like how it happened in Sanger. You know, that was very sad to to hear about them, so um that's one of the things, the other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention. Is the um the re- the PD reports and I brought it to you the last time we had the meeting. Are they taking more than ten days because there's people that are posting still that they're taking up to a month and longer, they only have ten days. From my understanding, a report needs to be done, completed within ten, ten days. And are they doing that or?
In most cases, ten days is sufficient for extensive investigations, we'll do a preliminary investigation in in ten days. But there are additional supplementals that will go along with that because of the extents, it depends on the severity of the investigation, but. In most cases, it's ten days, seven to ten days, you should be able to get your report and we have done a lot to improve that. So since the last complaint that I got, I made sure I I conveyed to my supervisors.
Because they're posting.
The officers are getting them in, like I said. Yeah, I would say, you know, eighty-five percent of the cases we get, it should be seven to ten days, the other fifteen percent are. Long extensive investigation, traffic collisions are a little harder to get out, but uh we we still fall under that guideline, so we try to get them out, so. We are doing better and we'll continue to improve on that.
Yeah, okay, thank you, I just wanna make sure because I still see those posts, um and then the veterans um uh. Field for the softball, I know that they came out here and asked about that, is there anything being done about that?
Yeah, they they actually, the Public Works Director went out there and they inspected the area, they didn't find any uh water leaks or any uh. Uh ruptures in in mains out in that area, so they attributed it to just maybe the uh the leftover uh rain. Drainage from uh the previous, previous week, but they did do, they did do an inspection of the fields. And that whole area, they went out a couple of times and they reported back two times that they couldn't find anything, so. Right now, I believe that the water has subsided or has been, has evaporated.
I just wanna make sure that we don't fall behind on that, cause I think they start pretty soon.
I sent an email the same day that we were in.
Okay, good, I just, I don't want them to think that we forgot.
We we responded to that the next day.
Okay, good, okay, thanks, um and the other is on the. I know there was, and I talked to you on the phone about this too, and I know it's under investigation, I don't want details, but um. The the status on the um, is it, is it been forward on the three car collision? Because remember I told you that there was a um person stating, and I think I even saw it on social media too, um where. They're claiming that the officer was texting, um so maybe you can just follow up on that and stay on top of that, I'm not asking for any details. But um. Okay, because yeah, that that's very concerning when I see that, um especially since that's how this last. Well, I think they said that that's how the last accident happened, but I'm not sure if it was, it was during, if it was texting or not. So it wasn't that, okay, alright, so I just wanna make sure and then on the um finance department. Um I know you're working, you're 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 working really hard to clean up all the areas that you need to clean up. Um because I had mentioned at the last meeting as well, where there's um. Funding that are from different accounts that we have, not that they're bank accounts, but our accounts that we manage in our city. Um uh system and so um I know that there's been issues from from grants. That are being pulled, funding that's being pulled from the general fund instead of the actual grant. Or um other funding sources that we have, like I said, Measure C, SB one, the infrastructure funds that we have. There's different funds that you um you pull from for the projects. And um I I my understanding is that it's still coming out of our general fund, so uh. My concern is is that we spent all this money on the last consultant to supposedly work on these fundings. To make sure that it was. Being done proper and in the in the way it's supposed to and this is why our our um auditor said that. He couldn't come in and clean up and then come in and audit, because that's not acceptable, you can't, that's borderline, you know, you you have that experience. So I just wanna make sure that if everything looks a little better, or how does, how do you feel about? What's going on now since you've been there, I know it's been still not enough time.
Um I've actually researched a lot, uh mainly on those expenses. Um and right now, I'm in the middle, I've provided reports to the directors. I am planning on meeting with each one, going through every account and ensuring that every expense that's in the general fund is should be there. And once we go through that, then we wanna make sure all our revenues came in as they're supposed to and that they're in the correct account as well. So I'm slowly working on it, I'm getting there, but definitely will, I'm hoping to be completely cleaned up, cause our audit starts in May.
That is why I I even documented that, because um. That happens, you you need to make sure that it's it's, well, not just you, it's everybody in the team. Um needs to make sure that that it's done, because that is what delays, and I said this the last time, that is what delays the audits. Because if you have a mess in your in your accounts and they have to come and clean and then audit. That's what prolongs the audit, not because they just don't wanna do the audit. Um sometimes it may be because they're scheduling too, but that also is part of it. So it's both of them, both situations, the 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 cleanup and the other um a- other agencies that they have to work around too. So um I that's what the reason why I wanna make sure, because I know that we need to be in compliance with our audits. Um because of the fundings that we are not able to receive at this time because of the delays. So um I think you spoke to them up in.
I did, yes, and we're actually TDA is good to go, now we're on to Measure C, so we're all caught up, so we're getting there.
No, no, and I'm not expecting you to be like. I know, it it's, but I just wanted an update because I know you you haven't been there that long, but you're, since you're moving everything along. Quickly, I think that that's really good to hear, because now I can say, okay, finally, you know, we're getting somewhere, because. Uh it's great to have a finance director that's that knows what they're doing and um and can actually. Kathy, stop defaming people. Um so the other thing is that um. You know, when you understand and being that you're you're, I I think you were also an auditor before too, I think that.
I did both.
And that's kinda like what we had before too, and that's why I like that, that you have that background as from the last one that we had too. Because you have a better understanding of what, how it's supposed to look and how things are. And that's why when they told me that you um were uh had that background, I was happy with that, so thank you for what you do. And I'm just glad that you're on board and be patient also with us, because I know that you see the chaos up here, but. You know, we're just trying to make sure that we're in good standing, because it does affect our finances, but. And you're the most important role, you are, cause without you. It would be a mess and we wouldn't be able to do anything with our, with the city, so you're the most important role. Not that I wanna put pressure on you or make you feel like, oh my god, but you are, you you're bringing a lot of, you know, value to the city, so thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it, I don't have anything else, um the only thing I, oh, no, I did actually, I wanted to clarify something real quick. Point of clarification, and this has to do with me, because I see a lot of posts, again, it has to do with the. The smear campaigns, the defamation of character, the uh the slander. Um people need to be careful in what they say about other people when they don't have facts, because they don't understand. That when you posting on a social media and you defame that person, you can be held accountable and liable. And one of the things that I know that is being said out there, that is ridiculously. Not very bright for somebody to actually believe this, but you know, it is being said. Um the thing that is being said that the city has been paying for my medical surgeries, which I don't know what surgeries they're talking about. Um I get my medical through PERS, because I'm a retired correctional officer and I get my benefits from the department. The state department, the city doesn't pay a dime for me, the only thing that it covers, it covers my husband, he gets his medical, that's his employment. Um I get my medical benefits through CalPERS, so I wanted to make sure people understand that. Don't always believe what is being said to you, tell them to show you the proof, don't just say, oh, okay, because so and so came in, they said this. Because there's a paper circulating around in town, that is ridiculous. Um the other thing is that that the city pays for my vacations, city doesn't pay for any of my vacations. I haven't even been on a vacation for a little while, because I go to trips that have to do with the city business, that the city doesn't even pay for at all. Um because Fresno Council of Governments, F uh FCOG is the one that actually pays for everything for me to represent the city, that's who pays for it. The city of Parlier has not paid a dime for two years because they refuse to pay for it. And even though it brings a lot of funding to the city, because there's millions of dollars, as you can see, that come from SB one, that come from our. Legislators, that come from Measure C, that is all part of the money that bring, that I'm able to bring to the city. Because nobody else is representing, but that is one of the things that I wanna make sure and clear that. Vacations, no, and people that don't understand is because they've never understood government and and they are easily manipulated by that. And because you don't understand how government works, if somebody tells you, oh, you're, the city's paying for their vacation, they're actually gonna believe, oh, they're paying for her vacation. That would take everybody here to be agreeing to that, finance director, city attorney, city manager, council. That would have to be everybody up here to be, okay, let's pay for her vacation, which is not happening. Um the other thing I wanted to clarify, and thank you for mentioning it the last time where you said about Ensenada. The mayor, former mayor's son is constantly saying that I'm um going on my trip. The mayor, former mayor's son is constantly saying that I'm going on my trips and that I went to Encinala. Well, the, the sister, the sister city was created by his father. That created this in 2009, that did the resolution for the sister city in Encinala. So when I went to Encinala, I went to Encinala for a specific reason because the mayor there is the first female mayor in Mexico and Encinala. So me being the first female mayor Latina here, Mexican-American, representing the city of Parlour, I thought it was important to connect with her because we have something that we can relate to and that she is our sister city. So I paid for my expense, nobody paid a dime for my expense. But Mr., the former mayor had gone to China, had gone to New York, all expenses paid by the city of Parlour. I have never done that. My trips are trips for the city business only. When I go to DC is to talk to our legislators there, all of our congressmen, to make sure we get funding, just like I'm going to be going this April, at the end of April, all expenses paid by Fresno Council of Governments because I'm representing the city of Parlour to bring funding here. We're looking at 10 million to come to the city of Parlour for an educational trail that Javier has, did an application for, and thank you Javier. And you'll be sending your, your staff to be attending as far, as far as the, the trip will be, he'll be going with me to present the need for the educational trail that will connect the city of Parlour to Reedley for the college there. So all these expenses that are being said out there, it's just a bunch of slander. Mr. Lopez needs to be careful because if he keeps slandering me, he's putting his name out there saying these allegations that are not accurate about me, that I spent money and that maybe, I guess, all of you guys are colluding because how can that even happen without the support of the council or even the finance director or the city attorney and the city manager? So these are things that are being said that are our fault and it's all a smear campaign because they're getting ready for the next election. So that's all I just wanted to say, that those are all allegations. I don't go to things that are not, if there's nothing that's, it's not relevant to the city, like I paid for Encinala, even though it's a sister city, I still paid for my own way there, not the city's expense. But I wanted to represent the city of Parlour because you had people there from China and you had there from, and Spain, representing their countries. So I thought it was important for Parlour to be there and also represent the city. And mind you, back then, the trips were made almost yearly to Encinala by the former mayor. So I just wanted to say that, I just wanted to clarify that with the residents to understand that this is all just a smear campaign, it's, they're getting ready for the next election. Be more, ask more questions, ask them to provide you proof instead of just telling you things. Because anybody can say whatever they want to say, doesn't mean that it's true. So with that, thank you Chief, I know that you're working on the BAMI situation, please bring it back. Work on, because you, you do have people that are very concerned about our animal situation here. And not having the connections that we had is going to be the, the part where we can have a serious issue in the future. And if you remember, I don't know if you were here when they did that grand jury report on the, all the euthanized, euthanized dogs that they had, I think there was thousands of dogs that were euthanized in one year. And I don't want us to become that because I, in my leadership, I, I love animals, I would do whatever I can to protect them. So to me, it's, let's work on a plan, what we can do and, and work together versus just kicking people out and not enclosing our doors to them. Because she's doing a service that is not being paid for at all by the city. All we did was provide them a space. So please see what you can do and bring it back to the council. With that, Megan, can you please go over the closed session?
Yes, and there's actually, there's a special meeting as well. So I think I'll defer to you, the special meeting has to do with the city manager process and the closed session is, has to do with the cases that are, and any potential litigation, so...
We can do the, the manager and then, and then continue with the rest of the items.
Okay, and so, yes, so we'll go into, I may have a motion to go out of open session into a special meeting and...
So that is open or is it closed? Because I thought it was in closed.
It's open.
Oh, it's an, it's an open meeting because it's listed as a closed?
Excuse me, it's closed session.
Okay, yeah.
It is closed session, but you have to open it and then close it.
I, I, Bertha's eyes almost fell out of her eyes, I mean, out of her face.
No, you have to open it and then close it, so I'm going to defer to Bertha on this because she set it up.
So it's closed session, correct, so we just can carry both into... Yeah, yeah, it's because it's closed session, so it's, it's not a regular meeting, so it's closed session, you can have, it's, it's just going to continue in the closed session, we can do them. You don't have to really, because it's just...
Well, you have to open the special meeting.
The special, close, the closed session.
And then close it after you, after you go through the opening of the...
That's why, this is why it always, it creates a confusion when it's done this way. This way, but I understand that there was a situation, but okay. So this open, well, I have to close the closed, the regular meeting?
Correct, well, actually, they...
I was, this is, I just want to say what I was trying to do. What I was trying to do is just, since we have it agendized that they're going to be in closed session, that we open the closed session together. Because I used to open a special meeting with a regular meeting together and we just work off the agenda. So what I was proposing to do is open the closed session together with the special item of the, a special closed session together. And we work on the first closed session item and then have them leave and then go on with the other items.
That, that sounds fine to me.
Okay, then we'll just do that. So we're going into closed session on the special meeting for, what did it say? Bertha? City Manager Recruitment? Public Employment?
City Manager?
City Manager?
Government Code Section?
Government Code Section?
4957.
54957, thank you. Alright, thank you guys. Oh, and then we're also going to have the closed session on the regular meeting, thank you. Oh, public com, the council, council comments, the public closed session items, yes.
Yeah, if there are any public comments on any of the closed session items, now would be the time to step forward on the closed session items at, only.
Okay, Erin, then we'll go into closed session and then we'll come back.
So we have quite a long, Kathy.
So we have to report that the items for closed session, which is the Community Development Director Public Employment Performance Evaluation is moved for the next council meeting, April third and also the special meeting, which is the public employee employment title city manager government code section five four nine five seven will be for April third as well. Okay, or we're tabling it for future date. Thank you. Kathy, please be quiet already. I know it's hard for you, but please be quiet. Thank you very much. Meeting.